I would like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the boardroom, please note the location of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for individual reflection. And our flag is in the corner of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we stand for all of the students from Parkland, Florida, and anyone else has been the victim of senseless violence. Thank you, everyone. 4.0, we have one presentation for this evening. We are going to hear about the Character Education activities at Lancaster Middle School with Bonnie Blatner and Allison Smirka.
Well, I get to start off, and I'd like, on behalf of Mr. Benjamin and myself, welcome the board to Lancaster Middle School. About a year ago, I was approached by a few teachers who had a vision and a passion to make our school a kinder and better place for everyone. After a series of meetings, they started a grassroots effort to collaborate with student leaders and to start a movement based on the movie Wonder and a character named Augie. Some of those teachers are here tonight. Mrs. Adamo, Mrs. Stock Slater, Mrs. Freund, Ms. Blatner, Mrs. Wiseman, and Mrs. Smirka. These teachers represent more than twenty-five teachers in the building who partake in this activity. The LMS staff who are participating and leading the cause. They tonight, along with some of their students, will share with you many of this year's initiatives. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Smirka. And if the board, if you would like, because of the presentation, have a seat in the audience.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mrs. Smirka, Allison Smirka, and I'm here with Mrs. Adamo and Ms. Blatner, who are a few of the members of the Wonder Committee here at LMS. JJ and Olivia Naspie are also here, and they'll be speaking after we show you a brief video. The Wonder Committee really began based on the book Wonder. And so many of us teachers found the themes of Wonder to be so powerful and relatable. We decided that we needed to help the students not just be successful academically, but in other areas as well, such as in life skills. So some of the themes we wanted to focus on this year were helping the students to incorporate other people who maybe were different than they were. How to show kindness to not just students in the school, but also out in the community. And how they can persevere when things get tough. So those were some of the skills that we really wanted to work on this year with our students. And in order to do that, we decided that we would need to incorporate these skills into various classes. So as you can see, based on the list up there, these are all of the core members that we have on our committee. And we have quite a variety of teachers who have been helping out and incorporating these skills into their classes. We have also begun to incorporate this into the school culture, not just into our curriculum. For example, we started off the year with, during homerooms, throwing kindness around like confetti. And the board members have two pieces of confetti in front of them on the table. And one of them is an inspirational piece, just to put a smile on their face. And then the other piece of confetti is a kindness challenge, something for you to do to go out and put a smile on somebody else's face. So we're very excited to be here this evening with you. We have a video for you to show you some of the other things we've been working on here at LMS. The video is about three and a half minutes long, and it just gives you a glimpse as to what we've been working on so far this year and where we want to head in the future as well. So sit back, relax, enjoy. And after the video, Olivia and JJ would like to say a few things to you as well. So hopefully you can tell by that that this has really been quite a team effort from the whole middle school, all the way up to the district office as well. Everyone from the secretaries to teachers, counselors, the students, everyone has really come together to embrace this movement. So we're very excited to get to share it with you this evening. And if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. All right, well, thank you. I'll turn the mic over to JJ and Olivia. And they're just going to explain a little bit more about our field trip that we took in November.
Good evening. I'm JJ Garashi, and I am the president of Student Council. And I would just like to tell you a little bit about myself. Coming into this school, I am not the person who I am today. I was very quiet, and if someone asked me to speak, I would say no. I would, I just couldn't. And I would just like to recognize the three teachers here today. I would like to recognize Senior Smirka, just to say that if you have a goal, you can fulfill it. That if you persevere, you can make that goal come true. And for Madama Adamo, rain or shine, you should be kind to someone. If you smile at someone, you just made that someone's day. And Ms. Blatner has helped me become a respectful individual. And Student Council has also helped me be an organized leader. This also ties into SWISS and RAC. SWISS is going to be a subcommittee under Student Council. And RAC is going to be Random Acts of Kindness, et cetera. SWISS and RAC helped me lend a helping hand when it wasn't asked, but when it was needed.
Good evening. I'm Olivia Naspie, and I am a part of SWISS, RAC, Junior SAD, Student Council, and NJHS. All of these clubs have helped me become the student leader that I am today. Also, I've became a student leader from the great teachers, from all the way from Hillview Elementary to William Street to now. And they've also taught me all of the great morals that I know today. We started off the day with an assembly with Lisa Draper, a speech-language pathologist from the Craniofacial Center of Western New York. Here, she discussed the issues that the main character of Wonder, Augie, deals with.
From there, we went and saw the movie at Flix. We had some popcorn. We sat with our friends, and it was a fun day.
Once we got back, we went to Station One, which there we had a breakout session where Student Council leaders led a discussion about the movie and what we can learn from it. And then after that, we filled out a kindness link to add to our chain about like kind acts that everyone has done.
From there, we went to Station Two. Station Two was the graffiti wall. In the gym, we had four main rolls of paper. Each roll of paper had a specific theme. So one theme was, what are you thankful for, and what has LMS contributed to you? So as you can see, someone wrote, "Love yourself," and "You are amazing," and "Include others."
Station Three, we completed Diversity Dots, where all the students stood in a line and closed their eyes, and they all received a dot except for one student. Each different colored dot that they received was a different social group. And here, we learned that there's one person who is always left out, and we talked about ways that we can include others.
From there, we went to Station Four. Station Four is when each individual got a pen pal that was in seventh grade. From there, we just wrote them some comments of how eighth grade was, and like, don't stress out, and good luck on next year, and how they're liking LMS.
Then, we all went back to, when we were back in our homerooms, we completed a reflection video on kindness and how we can learn from everything that we've completed throughout the day. Thank you for supporting us in our educational endeavor.
And if you have any questions or comments, feel free to ask. Yeah? Yeah, these two activities helped me adventure out of my comfort zone. And like, it helps me go to someone who I'm not comfortable with. Yeah, we had some awkward moments, but like, we worked them out. Like, we helped bond a relationship between us.
Thank you.
Thank you again for having us here this evening. We really appreciate it. I'll stay till the end, so if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
So before we move forward, I'd like to once again thank our presenters and Principal Krasinski for updating us on some very positive things that are going on within the Lancaster Middle School. I think we were all taken aback by the recent events in Parkland, Florida. And it sort of puts us on our heels and makes us very concerned about the safety and the welfare of our children and of our teachers and anyone who walks through our buildings throughout the district. And what I'd like to do is everybody to take a deep breath. Tonight, Dr. Vallee is going to update us on several security measures that have been in place or have been in place and will continue to unfold as our year progresses, as our capital projects progress and unfold at the various buildings. We're going to be continually addressing the safety and security of our buildings and our students. But also, I'm glad that we had this presentation tonight because I think one of the key components of creating safe schools is teaching character education and teaching, what I refer to as social emotional wellness, so that children feel valued and they feel heard, and they feel as though they can express themselves to one another and also to the adults who are in charge of facilitating a healthy and safe environment. So I'm glad you're here tonight. Please give your attention to Dr. Vallee when he goes through his report and then continue to ask questions of district and school personnel if you do have concerns as the days go on. 5.0, we have correspondence. We have no correspondence for this period. 6.0, approval of minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from February 5th, 2018?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Go ahead, teacher.
Thank you. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association? I agree. Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, thank you. 8.0, board reports. Does anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report on?
I feel like it's been a long time since we were together because according to my notes, I'm reporting on what happened on February 8th. So on February 8th, I attended the forum at the Erie County Association of School Boards, where we did a roundtable discussion. And myself, along with the president of Erie Coyd, were presenters for a topic called Community Relations. And that went really well. And if you ever get the opportunity to do those roundtables, and talk to the board members in particular, please do. Because you learn a lot from each district who shares with you at those tables and the networking alone. But some pretty interesting things had come up at that meeting. On February 9th, I was right here in our middle school, attending the musical Thirteen. Wow. These kids, they blow me away every, it's some middle school, I'm a middle school teacher. I'm around middle school students every day. And this music department blows me away every single time. If you didn't know that was a middle school production, if you didn't know you were here in this building, you would never know those are middle school kids. Amazing. I don't know if any of you got the chance to see it, too. I'm sure you did. It was phenomenal. Unfortunately, I didn't get to the high school play. I missed that every year for some reason, but I was in Albany for, the next thing I would talk about was the Capitol Conference, which was that exact weekend for the annual Capitol Conference in Albany, where I met with legislators and senators, unfortunately, most of which were their aides, which I wasn't really happy about, to travel all the way out there and not to speak right directly with them. I spoke with a couple, but a lot of aides. But we got a lot accomplished. We had a small group of people in each meeting, so we were able to capitalize on our time with that representative. On March 5th through the 7th, I went back to Albany, and I actually got to sit in on the New York State Teacher Certification Exam Review. And that was more of my role as a teacher, but it came to me as a board member. So I took up that opportunity, and that was amazing. We went and did the review, the questions for the New York State Teacher Certification Exam for the multi-subjects, seven through twelve math, which is for special ed teachers who want to get their math certification, seven through twelve. We did a hundred and forty questions in two days and reviewed for the items like bias and whether the, if it's mathematically correct and so on. So that was a very interesting experience. I'm glad I went and did that. And lastly, was the legislative meeting on March 1st. I did not attend that due to the snow. They actually ended up canceling. But there is a lot of talk lately about the Erie County Executive and merging schools. And Dr. Vallee, I don't know if you're going to touch on that as well tonight with the merger? Huh? No. It doesn't really affect us right now. More affects my school that I teach in. But not worried. There seems to be a long process in that merger. So I can't see that going through, and what he's thinking, I'm not quite sure. And the best advice we were given from Erie County Association of School Boards was just, relax. Don't pay it much attention. So hopefully, that'll go away soon. And lastly, on March 8th, the Academy of Finance had their awards ceremony that they have every year, kind of like a Hollywood theme to it. It's awesome. Mr. Dixon is amazing. The man works his tail off. But it was excellent. The student, what I liked about it wasn't just an ordinary banquet, awards ceremony type thing. The kids actually got to showcase what they were doing. And you got to see it along with the awards they won. So it was just an amazing night. It always is, and I appreciate being invited to that as well. And that is it. I'm me.
Thank you, Mrs. Christopher. Anyone else have anything they'd like to report upon? I'll just mention that I was able to attend the Sister Act, the High School Musical. So between the two of us, we got to attend the middle school and the high school. And I concur, same thing. What an outstanding performance. I was actually talking to a dad who I went to grammar school with, who was from DePue. And then another one whose daughter plays the string bass and so on and so on. And I realized how many people have moved from DePue to Lancaster and made Lancaster their home. So I'm very proud of that. And then lastly, I went last night to UB and saw our Lancaster High School Concert Choir and the Symphony Orchestra perform a masterworks concert under the direction of Mrs. Ruda and Mr. Lee. And you know, I was just, again, taken aback, like, we actually have a symphony orchestra here at Lancaster. And it's just so impressive, and they're so well rehearsed and so well disciplined. And it just makes you very proud to be part of our district. So hats off to all of our performance groups and athletes and performers of all kinds. So that's it for me. Thank you. Dr. Vallee's administrative report is next.
So I do have quite a few things to discuss this evening. I'll start off with, we have a major study going on in this school district. It's the SES study. And the board is engaged with SES on numerous occasions. But just this week, the second part of the study came out. It's the pupil capacity analysis. That's been finalized, and it's been posted to the district website, shared throughout the community via email, Facebook, Twitter, and by word of mouth. So if you have a chance, please download the pupil capacity analysis and share it with anyone that might be interested. We really do want people to get involved. We want them to know the facts. And so please spread the word. We believe that it's extremely accurate and will give us some good information for the future discussions. Second, on an advocacy front, I'm happy to say that I was part of the Erie One BOSI Superintendent Committee that wrote the Western New York advocacy letter this year on behalf of the Western New York Erie One BOSI Superintendents. Thank you to Michael Cornell from Hamburg and Jeff Hicks from Clarence, who are also on the committee. Thank you for their leadership and for being part of this initiative. And thank you to all sixteen superintendents who signed that letter this year. Additionally, on an advocacy front, I have met with Monica Wallace and Patrick Gallivan, and I want to thank both of them for their time. I appreciate the time and the effort that they took to listen to the concerns that I had. And also their advocacy on behalf of New York State Public Schools. We need it at this time, and they seem to be good advocates for us on a number of different topics. Again, please take some time to read that Western New York Superintendent's letter. It's on my website. It's also on the district website. And if you want a copy, I'd be happy to provide you with one. Third, the school district's school community sends their sympathy to students, parents, faculty, staff of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. Since this tragic event, there have been various conversations, debates, initiatives, et cetera, discussed on television, radio, social media, and pretty much everywhere. These debates have been really focused on how do we eliminate the violence and the violent attacks on school. This topic is extremely important, but it's also huge in scope. And I'd like to take a few minutes here to address two issues of immediate importance. First, the March 14th memorial. The high school administration has been working with students, the student leaders, to develop a plan for the observance of that happening, observance of that this Wednesday. That's happening nationwide this Wednesday. The students in this school district are awesome. I met with them, Student Support, excuse me, SSAC is my. Uh, the school, the students in this school district, they're awesome. I met with them, uh, student, uh, student support, excuse me, SSAC is my group. Met with them, and, uh, uh, their plan is absolutely phenomenal. I'd like to, uh, um, recognize that I, excuse me, I'd like to tell you that the students, uh, first recognized, as I did, and so many of you in the audience probably did, that it's probably not a good idea to announce to the world and potential people desiring to harm schools, uh, the exact time and date that you're leaving the school. And certainly, schools across the country are going to empty. Um, doing so immediately makes us even more vulnerable, and anyone with malintent can now plan to do harm to those two hundred and, two thousand, two hundred and fifty students and adults, who are just standing outside in the wide open. So, uh, I am not passing judgment on any school district or anyone, uh, who empties their building or allows that to happen. I'm, I'm simply praising the fact that our students, leaders, and our administrators worked together, and, uh, took this into account and thought of a safer alternative, given the world that we're living in. Uh, secondly, uh, by student request, this event was closed, is closed, or going to be closed to the media, and I support this one hundred percent. The students, again, smartly said, hey, listen, uh, our goal is not political, but instead, instead to rally, uh, everyone around the one thing that we all can agree on, and that is that we need to pay respect to the victim, victims, and focus everyone on stopping violence in our schools. I thought that was very astute. Uh, a letter hit home this, this week detailing the plan, uh, to parents and all those affected, and I hope and continue to plan for a safe and respectful day on Wednesday. Again, just kudos to those, uh, student leaders and our student body. Uh, we should be very proud of them, and the, uh, teachers and the administrators with whom they're working to plan that out. Very well done, and I'm very happy and proud of what they have going thus far. You know, the tragic event in Florida has heightened many people's anxieties and fear, and I want to be sure to tell people that improving safety in our Lancaster schools is not a new phenomenon. On the contrary, in fact, uh, since Columbine in nineteen ninety-nine, and Sandy Hook in two thousand and twelve, and each and every one, excuse me, and each and every one of the over one hundred and twenty school shootings across the country during that time, it's hard to believe, one hundred and twenty school shootings during that time. This district and this Board of Education, each and every year, has placed its, placed safety first in taking steps to try to improve the safety of all our students and adults. So I wanted to take a few minutes to highlight and summer, a summary of the things we've done and will be doing, so that people can understand the breadth and scope, and articulate the plans of the future. Again, this will not be all encompassing. I have, you know, maybe like eight minutes here, uh, but, uh, this should give you a summary of some, a flavor for some of the things that we're doing, and certainly more to follow. So the following measures have been taken by Lancaster Central School District since the beginning of two thousand and thirteen to enhance safety and security of our students, faculty, staff, and the buildings. Uh, K through three. In two thousand and thirteen, walkthroughs were performed in each building to identify areas in need of changes in order to enhance security. Walkthroughs included principal, custodian, uh, school resource officer, or another member of the Lancaster Police Department, Director of Facilities, Assistant Superintendent for Business, and together they designed, uh, put together an action item list that were created and pri- then prioritized. John A. Sholey, Hillview, and Como Park have newly constructed entrances that the Lancaster community invested millions of dollars in. These new entrances require the use of a buzzer, camera, and filter through the main, and filter through the main office, filter visitors through the main office before being able to proceed, proceed to the rest of the building. So if you were a parent, uh, out there and you're thinking about Como Park, you can think about how that dramatically look, dramatically different that looks, or Hillview, for example, or, uh, uh, John A. Sholey. Um, the main entrances at Court Street were retrofitted with buzzers and camera in order to identify someone attempting to enter the building prior to them entering. As a part of the Capitol Project cycle, Court Street is scheduled for even more improvements this summer. So there were things changed, but this summer, uh, Court Street's up for, uh, changes. A group, uh, will be, uh, relooking at what they, uh, discussed in two thousand and thirteen to see if we've learned anything from the past. And again, um, those, some of those changes will be taking place this summer. Various classroom doors and exterior doors at Hillview, Como Park, Court Street have been replaced. Doors with large glass openings were upgraded to minimal glass. Locks were added, replaced, or repaired in order for certain aspects to be able to be locked. We implemented practices in each building, each one of those buildings, that entrances into buildings are locked after students' arrival, and limited to main office entry for visitors. Key fobs and systems that go with them are, were installed around each building at various entrance locations, so doors would no longer be propped open, and principals, faculty, and staff have worked hard to ensure that this policy is followed. Our ID badge system was implemented for all employees, who are required to wear uniformed, district-issued badges around their neck in uniform, uh, and an, and a district-issued lanyard, so someone can easily be identified if they shouldn't be in the building. A behind-the-scenes camera system and the equipment was upgraded to new, a newer system at Hillview, Como Park, Court Street, and John A. Sholey as part of the Capitol Project. Also outdated cameras were replaced, and additional cameras were added to each building as part of the project. Panic buttons were installed in key areas of each building to alert law enforcement of an emergency without having to make phone calls. PA systems were replaced at Hillview, Como Park, Court Street, and John A. Shor- Sholey as part of the Capitol Project, and state mandated lockdown drills are implemented on a quarterly basis. William Street. Similar to the K-three buildings, the main entrance at William Street was retrofitted with a buzzer and a camera in order to identify someone attempting to enter the building. This also requires them to filter through the main office at William Street, um, on their way, on their way in, as opposed to walking straight through the doors, uh, as it had been done before. Locks were added, replaced, or repair, repaired in order for certain spaces to be able to be locked. Entrances into buildings are locked after students' arrival and limited to main office entry for visitors. Key fobs were installed around each building at various locations. Again, the ID badge system was implemented for all employees at William Street. The camera system there was upgraded and into a newer system, and, uh, as part of the Capitol Project, various cameras were placed, multiple cameras added to the building that had never existed before. Here, too, panic buttons were added to key areas of each, you know, key areas to William Street. Um, and weekly PIC pupils in crisis meetings were reinstated during the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year. Um, administration and key mental health personnel meet weekly to review and discuss students in crisis. When warranted, SRO officer attends the PIC meetings at William Street to ensure police collaboration and support. Uh, school-wide safety team meets quarterly to review and discuss safety concerns. The entire safety team is equipped with walkie-talkies, uh, to communicate. State mandated lockdown drills implemented at William Street are on a quarterly basis. Right here, seven through eight in the middle school. The main office of the middle school was completely redone. Um, you're sitting in brand-new, uh, chairs, uh, but there are a lot of, uh, safety things done, like the buzzers, the camera systems, the system that requires visitors to filter through the main office instead of before just coming into the, uh, school. Here, too, locks were added, replaced, or repaired in order for certain spaces to be able to be locked, and the building is locked after student arrival, and limited to main office entry for visitors only. Key fobs were installed in the middle school, uh, various locations, so doors would no longer be propped, and again, the ID badge system was implemented for all employees. Panic buttons added to key locations of the building to alert law enforcement, and a, a second full-time SRO was added to the middle school in two thousand and seven, and continued by this Board of Education in this town of Lancaster. The cost for our two SOR officers are split by the district and town, and we are very, very fortunate to have this support and collaboration with the town of Lancaster, and I and all of us thank them very much. State mandated lockdown drills are implemented here at the middle school on a quarterly basis at the middle school here. Nine through twelve, the high school main office, if you remember correctly, was completely redone, incorporating it, the, an old administrative office that now is the main office. The entrance was then retrofitted with a buzzer and camera, and an entire front entryway was redesigned with handicapped accessibility, and an entrance that requires visitors to filter through the office on their way into the school. Locks were added, replaced, and repaired in order for certain spaces to be able to be locked. Key fobs were installed, like I mentioned before, but that was also at the high school, with fifty-six doors. That was extremely important. Our schools were not created in nineteen fifty-four to be, uh, exclude people. They were built to include people and be part of the community. So this is especially a huge challenge with a, uh, a high school with over two thousand students and fifty-six doors. Camera system and equipment was upgraded to a newer system. We have cameras all over the place now. As part of the Capitol Project, and here, too, pa- panic buttons were added in key locations. The high school PA system was replaced as part of the two thousand and twelve Capitol Project. The high school SRO officer program has continued since two thousand and three, and Lancaster was one of the first school districts to implement what at the time was a, what at the time was a controversial addition. Um, during the day, Lancaster police, police officers patrol high school grounds and check parking tags and the like. State mandated lockdown drills implemented on a quarterly basis, and as I reported, the Board and the community, they are absolutely phenomenal at, when you consider the magnitude of, uh, what teachers and staff and administrators have to do for, uh, close to two thousand students. Central Avenue, locks were added, replaced, and repaired in order, uh, for certain spaces to be able to be locked. Camera system equipment was upgraded to a newer system as part of the two thousand and twelve Capitol Project. Also outdated, cameras were replaced, and additional cameras were added as part of the project. A pre-K set of doors was installed before the startup of the universal pre-K program eight years ago, and this set of doors is inside the school and excludes entry in and out of the pre-K wing. Just last we- week, we moved to lock all the doors at Central Ave, thus impeding visitors from the rest of the Central Ave building. District-wide, bus drivers and attendants have been provided training for potential attacks on school buses while out on the road. Uniform language and procedures were created across district for lockdowns, lockouts, and shelters in place. One-page guides are in all rooms and in all substitute teacher folders every day. Training on this guide was completed by every employee, including substitutes, each year and every year. Much training has occurred, for example, attendance by school administrators and other personnel at various emergency response, active shooter, and safety and security trainings. District-wide building emergency plans are reviewed and updated at least annually. Plans are posted in the secure area of the Lancaster Central School District website, so they are accessible by district administration and law enforcement from any device, anywhere, anytime. Again, four lockout drills are performed in each building annually. This became a recor- state requirement for the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year, but our buildings, and we're performing such drills for many years prior to that, and the Lancaster and DePue Police Departments and other emergency response personnel have participated in the drills during all those years, and when they do, they offer advice, suggestions, and things to work on. Lancaster Police Department and DePue Police Department vehicles are all equipped with key fobs to enter all buildings easily and quickly. Lancaster Police Department performs practice drills with their entire squad, not just the SWAT team, in all of our schools, and I continue to work with both chiefs to en- ensure that each and every police officer on their respective forces have been through and visited all of our buildings, so in the event of any kind of emergency, it isn't the first time that a police officer has entered our buildings. This is just a synopsis. Uh, so moving forward. Schools can't fix the problem by themselves. We need a multifaceted, multi-layered approach to school violence. That includes our president, our politicians, our lawmakers, changes to laws, changes to mental health ser- services for all ages, more coordinated communication between groups promoting safety, and help financially in funding all the recommended changes. We all need to come together to fight and to stop this from continuing to happen in our country's schools. Here in Lancaster, we will continue with our systematic and comprehensive approach, and continue to lead in this area. Our administrative team will meet with the Lancaster and DePue Chief of Police, and key individuals from their department in the coming week. At this meeting, we will continue the great work, planning, and collaboration that we have here in this community, focused laser-like on making our schools as safe as possible. That discussion and analysis will be followed by the next round of safety walkthroughs for the long-term Capitol Project Planning Sessions. Like in two thousand and thirteen, we have already planned and scheduled and begun that next process. Building administrators, custodians, Lancaster DePue Police, and young and right architects, and other key individuals will complete their walkthroughs in the next two weeks. The suggestions and remedies that they provide us, um, and this team will, and our own sa- safety, uh, and our safety experts will be summarized and presented to the Board of Education, and will be recommended in the upcoming Capitol Project. So again, um, in a short synopsis, that's a, a flavor for what we have going, uh, in the, in the past couple of years, but also where we, uh, plan to go in the future, and, uh, the Board will, uh, receive that, uh, update as soon as it is completed. Thank you very much, and thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Valley. Um, and that's to be continued, of course, uh, and we will continue to update you and provide you with information as we, uh, look to continue to secure and make safe our, our schools for our children. Ten point O, old business. Uh, does anyone have any old business they'd like to bring up? Eleven point O, new business. Eleven point one, personnel items. Eleven point one, point one, personnel changes. Could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two, education items. Eleven point two, point one. Could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Educations report? Any questions or comments?
I have a question, and I think I've asked you before. Why, why does the Board need to approve this every month? Is it, is it like, uh, something we chose to do, or is it something we have to do?
No.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, you, in essence, the, um, CSE is making recommenda- CSE making recommendations for students, as you know. Some of them are financial, and some of them, whatever, but the Board has to approve them, certainly.
Yeah, we approve them based upon the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education. So those have to be approved. Well, if you take exception to any of the recommendations, then you would question them.
I'm just trying to alleviate some work on your part if we don't need to do. I don't, I mean, I look, I can look through it.
I think it's simply, as Mr. Armstrong pointed out, state law, right, so.
Right, well, that's, that was my question. Is it something we have, we have to do, and we have to do. I was trying to eliminate you, and you're.
We don't want to eliminate you, Mr. Armstrong, of course.
Not you, but the, I mean, there's enough work.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two, point two. Could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education's report?
So moved.
Any questions or comments there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point O, business and financial items. Uh, twelve point one, could I have a motion to accept the financial items, as written?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point two is a policy adoption, sixty-five fifty for leaves of absence. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Uh, twelve point three, three through twelve point eight are first, uh, a couple, the first two are second policy readings. Fifty-seven forty-one, set in, uh, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and other safety-sensitive employees. Uh, seventy-three twenty is a second policy reading for alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances. And then first policy readings for seventy-three thirteen, suspension of students. Seventy-two twenty-two, diploma or credential options for students with disabilities. Uh, first policy reading for seventy-five fifty is the dignity for all students, uh, updates, and the first policy reading for fifty-six seventy, records management. Those are for information, and will be voted on at a future meeting.
Can we discuss something, maybe?
Sure.
I just have a question regarding fifteen, seventeen, oh, sorry.
I have a question regarding the policy on dignity for all students. So, on, on page three of five that we were given, there's language in here about the, the district encouraging and expecting students, and teachers, and parents, and whoever, uh, upon seeing any harassment, bullying, discrimination, to bring it to the attention of the staff. But the way it's worded in here, it says to the principal, superintendent, the DAC, which is our, our advocate, right, or our designee. Should we reword that? Page three of five, this one. Page three of five, this one. So like in the second paragraph, it says, "Students observe..." And then, "To the principal, superintendent, DAC, or his designee." Shouldn't we maybe reword that to follow the chain of command instead of putting superintendent in there? I mean, otherwise, I guess what's gonna happen? You know what I mean? Like, I think it, I think it needs to follow, I totally agree, the district encourages and expects students, that first part of it, awesome, but I think that we need to, I'll follow one spot, one chain.
So you're saying the order in which the positions are listed?
Well, not even the order, but, well, I guess it could be the order, or maybe just reword it altogether to, because otherwise you're saying that, you know, you can call it the principal, you could call it superintendent, you could call...
Are you on the second, third paragraph where it says, "The principal, superintendent, DAC, or designee will lead"? Just above that?
See, it says, "Reports and investigation harassment and bullying." Okay, this paragraph right here, most of it is rewritten, but that, if you put it together, maybe you should go on, I didn't print out like the one that, without all the red. I don't, I just, it's just a thought, I mean, to me, it opens up. It says it again in the next paragraph, too. "Principal, superintendent, DAC, designee will lead and/or supervise a timely, thorough investigation of all reports." It's something to think about.
We'll revise it and put it for the next board meeting. That's why it's for information.
Dr. Valley, it's written the way it's written because this is the overarching policy for the district, and in the Code of Conduct indicates in particular buildings what the process is. So this is written this way, as an overarching, rather than being specific. So it kind of tries to, it does try to cover everybody who is possible, who could possibly be reported to, but within the district, the Code of Conduct, which we just updated, specifically says what the reporting...
Yeah, but her point is, I think, number one, it's a chain of command and hierarchy and everything else, we can put that in order, and also, teacher is nowhere in there, and certainly we'd want students to do that. Teacher, adult, staff, you know, custodian, we're all part of that team. See something, say something. So certainly, we could change and adapt that and add that to the policy. We will change it and adapt it and put it for the board in the next board meeting. Any other questions or comments? Moving on to twelve point nine, twelve point nine, twelve point ten, and twelve point eleven are contracts with West Seneca Central School District, Frontier Central School District, and Amherst Central School District. Could I have a motion to accept those three contracts?
One more.
Any questions or comments on those? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twelve is Erie One Bocie's Call for Nominations, and we have three individuals who have requested our nomination for two spots that are available this year, and we can nominate one, two, or all three. Once we agree to nominate them, they can run, and their election will be for those two seats. Does anyone have any reason that they wouldn't want to nominate any of those three candidates? I thought that each of them were qualified and well-versed in education. I had no, I took no exception to any of them.
So we have to nominate all three?
That's what I'm saying. We have the option to nominate all three, or we can pick one, or two, or three. In, just in my perusing their letters to us as candidates, I thought that each of their qualifications were acceptable, so I have no problem with nominating all three.
I'd like to throw my support in for Renee Wilson. I've personally worked with her. I would absolutely support nominate. I can't speak personally on the other two. I read their letters as well, and I agree with you, they're obviously very dedicated, very qualified, but I'm gonna put my, I'm gonna put my vote behind. If you want to do all three, I'm fine with that, too, but I would definitely want to support Renee Wilson.
Yep, I mean, I concur. I know Mrs. Wilson as well, and personally, I don't know the other two personally. We vote on the...
You vote later.
Right, so these are call for nominations, right? So does anyone else have any other input? I think there's really nothing negative with throwing our nomination for each of them, okay? So, all those in favor of nominating those three individuals?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved, thank you. Twelve point thirteen is to appoint our election workers. Could I have a motion to accept those appointments?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fourteen, various providers of special education, which were detailed in the packet, could I have a motion to accept those providers? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fifteen is the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school calendar. Could I have a motion to accept the calendar? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point sixteen is the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen classified holiday schedule. Could I have a motion to accept that schedule?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point seventeen, accept the risk assessment and internal audit of payroll. Could I have a motion to accept that report? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, real quick, the Audit Committee did meet prior to this meeting about six o'clock. And we did meet with Fried Maxick, and they discussed their internal audit of payroll as well as the risk assessment, and at this point, I think, as a committee, we found that there was nothing to be concerned about, as what their findings, very low risk for the findings that they had for this two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year. So, the Audit Committee approves their findings as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gallagher, and I also would like to thank Mrs. Dapczynski and Mr. Jackson for serving on the Audit Committee for this year. All those in favor of accepting the report?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Twelve point eighteen is a donation acceptance from Mr. Michael Sage. Mr. Sage donated some funds to offset outstanding balances for school lunches, so we thank you, and could I have a motion to accept that donation?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? It's a very nice thing. Thank you, Mr. Sage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point nineteen is a contract with the Bureau of Internet Accessibility. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty and twelve point twenty-one are both contracts within our music department for Glenn Bernardis and Lynn Brunner.
Lynn Brunner is not a music professional.
She's a reading specialist.
Oh, sorry. Music and reading specialist. So let's do those individually then. Twelve point twenty, Glenn Bernardis, does anyone have any question or comments about that contract? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-one is the contract with Lynn Brunner. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
Second.
Any questions or comments, Mrs. Christopher?
I do have a question. I realized this is probably because it's a student confidential, I'd like to talk about it, so, and I probably should have called earlier today. Maybe you're right.
It's all right, I can probably answer it, go ahead. Microphone.
Goodness, okay, is it on? I guess my question is, we're, how much I can say? Contracting for this individual for, to reading instruction for a student in the district. We have AIS providers, we have qualified teachers, why are we hiring outside reading specialist? I guess is my question. I mean, you have, I realize for IEP, so we probably can't discuss them soon, but...
No, we can talk in generalities. There are times when we have students who are serviced outside of the school district, who have certain things either in their IEP, or certain agreements are made that need to be met at that particular school or in that particular location.
I thought the student was here in our buildings, according to where the instruction was taking place. That totally makes sense, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on twelve twenty-one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-two is the surplus textbooks report. Could I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-three is the surplus equipment report. Could I have a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-four is the food service operating reports. Could I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-five is a legal notice, the annual budget proposition slash vote and trustee election, which is coming up. Could I have a motion to accept that notice?
Pat?
Yeah?
I still have a question.
Yeah?
On the props, can you just clarify the proposition three? Thank you.
Let me just find out which one is three, one second. Yeah, so we'll let Jamie go with the details here, but in essence, we have to reauthorize our capital reserve fund for timeliness and also the amount, so that's what this is about. If you recall, the board discussed this and talked about it, I don't know, probably early fall, and also at our board retreat, that you have, well, Jamie, any more details?
Sure, every year, or every reserve has specific rules and regulations, and for the capital reserve and also the bus reserve, because that's considered a capital reserve, the voters establish it, and in the rules and regulations for those, the voters have to establish a period of time that the reserve will exist, and also a maximum contribution amount to that reserve. So for the capital reserve, it was the last approved in two thousand and eight, and it was for a period of ten years, so we are reaching the time where that reserve is, will expire. We are also pretty close to, I think about seventy-five percent, off the top of my head, of contributions that we've made towards the total contributions that were approved, when it was approved in two thousand and eight, which was eight million dollars. So we do have a balance in that reserve, and this, should this proposition be approved by the voters, we'll be able to transfer that balance into the new reserve. Otherwise, if it is not approved, the balance would need to be liquidated, and it would have to go towards paying debt, as opposed to going anywhere else. And then, basically, similar situation for the bus reserve. We're not running out of time, but we are reaching the upper limit in the amount of money we're able to contribute to that reserve, and as you know, we use that reserve every year to purchase our buses.
So now I remember when we went and we went through every single reserve, I think that was in October, we talked about this as one of the things that we really need to put out there. Otherwise, we're gonna go over, I mean, we can't go over our threshold for the amount of money and the number of years as well, so it's time, like we do every five, ten years, whatever, to go out to the voters and say, "Will you approve this capital reserve fund for this amount of money for this time period?" So we'll do that this coming May. Okay, thank you, Dr. Valley. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-six is a contract with Glynn Group Engineering and Architecture. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-seven is a pre-construction contract with Young &amp; Right Architectural. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-eight is a contract with Buffalo Construction Consultants. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twenty-nine, twelve point twenty-nine is our budget work session date, and we have two dates, two Mondays, consecutive Mondays, March nineteenth or March twenty-sixth at six P.M. that we were looking at. Does anyone have any, either of those dates, which would not work for them, board members?
The nineteenth will not work for me.
I'm bad on the nineteenth as well, so, okay, that's four of us. Does anyone have a problem with the twenty-sixth? Okay, so, all in favor of making that alternative date, March twenty-sixth at six, is six P.M. okay for everyone?
Yeah.
And it would be at Central Avenue?
Six thirty.
Six thirty has been thrown out there? I'm okay with six thirty. Do I hear seven? Six thirty, okay? Okay.
This is the budget.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of changing to Monday, March twenty-sixth at six thirty at Central Avenue School? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Thank you, everyone, for those accommodations. Twelve point three zero is a budget amendment. Could I have a motion to accept that amendment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point thirty-one are the construction change orders. Could I have a motion to accept the change orders?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. And then lastly, twelve point thirty-two is a contract with Stoll Environmental. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Thirteen point O is our public...
I don't know, go to public hearing. Now, just a hard point of reference in that reserve fund info we got set in October, it doesn't have a page number, but there is a capital, oh. Be my own. These are actual, well, they're easier.
Yes, I have to shut off.
I didn't turn that on either. The capital reserve page explains that with the, I just noticed it now and my nose is all over it, so that whoever wrote this doing like the Bible of, the Bible of fund balances, it's on that page. It really, it explains it much, not much better, but in writing, so you can read it later. I'll just stop that.
You are awesome just the way you are.
Keep happening, yeah.
That was for you.
Welcome to all who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This time is set aside for a public hearing, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome the opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to five minutes in which to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be barred from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. First, we have Kevin Carriero.
Could you do me a favor and come over here just so we can get it on the phone? I know you've got a loud voice, but...
One more time. My name is Kevin Carriero, I live at seven twenty-seven Erie Street in Lancaster. This is really just a shout-out to two different groups. The first one...
One more time. Hi, waving, watching. My name is Kevin Carriero. I live at seven twenty-seven Erie Street in Lancaster. Uh, this is really just a shout-out, uh, to two different groups. Um, the first one goes to the Transportation Department. About two weeks ago, um, specifically Thursday, March first, um, thirteen of our track athletes and I, um, took a bus to, uh, Eastern Hills Mall to join a larger group of athletes going to the New York State, uh, Public High School Track and Field Championships in Staten Island. Uh, we get on three separate buses at Eastern Hills Mall. And as, as you're well aware, um, Lancaster, among, uh, several other districts, will send a representative from the Transportation Department to check out the buses so that our, our athletes and coaches, um, are safe. Uh, one of the members of the Transportation Department came over and checked, checked it out and indicated that there was a chunk of a tire missing out of the back tire of, of our bus. And, um, uh, exerting his influence, he basically told the driver, you have the right to do as you're told, either a new bus or a new tire. And after consulting with the, uh, with the company, they followed our transportation worker over to Broadway at a, um, a place where they repair, repair or replace, uh, truck tires. And so we went over there, took about an hour and a half. He stayed with us the entire time, watched through the entire process to make sure that new tire got on the bus. Now, somebody oftentimes, we take things for granted. Gee, oh gee, that worked out really well. Watching us see the school play. Boy, that was unitary, so never really see the background. I'm just giving that shout-out to the Transportation Department. They do a tremendous job. I will add just a, a bit further with regard to our transportation people. I'm on the bus with the kids frequently with indoor track and outdoor track meets. And I can, I can't tell you the number of times our drivers go along, for example, on the four hundred on some bus from either another school district or another, uh, bus company go flying by us. And our bus driver always, without exception, always makes the comment, if I did that, I'd lose my job. So they adhere to the rules every time, a hundred percent of the time. Uh, another situation in, in Accra, uh, Arcade on the way to Houghton College for one of our meets. Uh, there were drivers in front of us from other districts and other, uh, other bus companies go right through a railroad crossing. Actually, there's, I think there's two or three in Arcade. And again, our driver said, that's illegal, that guy should lose his job. We would never do that. So again, shout-out to the Transportation Department. Second one, very quickly, thank you so much as a school board for approving and building our new track. It is the finest track in western New York, including colleges. Um, I would, um, I'm, I'm reminded of, of something I heard many years ago. Did you see Spencer laughing or I just didn't? I just did, yeah. Yeah. Not so much. I'm reminded of something I heard many years ago, it was, it was a school teacher about sheer decision-making. Somebody else, somebody else makes the decision and then she listens with you. That clearly was not the case. Uh, again, shout-out to, uh, to Jamie Phillips, who was there at every single one of those meetings along with us and the, and the other, uh, partners in, in putting this track together. And it was professionally done all the time. Um, just, uh, uh, we, we really appreciate being involved in the process because we had that opportunity to share our ideas, um, and a good number of them were accepted. But again, right, right from the get-go, this was professionally done. So I want to thank, uh, the board members, um, and, and Jamie, as well as our, uh, F R, Director Brian Wild, for staying through the whole process with us. It's been great and our kids, uh, will do good. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carriero. Next, we have signed up, um, Mr. Mary Klass. That's all of the, uh, speakers for this evening. Uh, fourteen point oh, we don't have any future presentations listed at this time. Fifteen point oh, could I have a motion to adjourn? Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting will be that Monday, March twenty-second. That's a budget work session at six thirty at Central Avenue, uh, School. Then we have our next board meeting, nope, I'm sorry, the next budget work session will be April ninth, two thousand eighteen, at Central Avenue School at six o'clock. And then our next regular session meeting will be Tuesday, April seventeenth, uh, at Central Avenue School at seven P M. And those, of course, are on our website. Okay, um, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone.